Mr. Shiner.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes. Next, we need a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Salute.
Mr. Bosso. Move to second. I'll second. Mrs. Martindale, are there any corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mr. Shiner.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes. And the presentations tonight, we're all start first, which is our site for the five year forecast.
Hey Meredith, if you could put it down to the first slide. Those in Johnson members of board, as you know, it's required by law that it's that time of year to present the bike or forecast for two thousand twenty-three fiscal year. Forecast, there was a change a few years back where forecast could be approved by November, but we're going to go ahead and do our normal and through this in October. After I present, you'll have this also in a fiscal item to approve. So what I want to go through on these four slides that I have are the overall revenues and expenditures and cash balances of the district. I'll give some high level revenue highlights and expenditure highlights, then I'll go through where the district stands in comparison with other districts in Franklin County. For this first slide, you can see the dark, the dark black bar, that's revenues. The lighter gray bar is expenditures and the gold line is our cash balance. We do a forecasting in a very conservative nature, so if we are about two percent higher on revenues than we anticipate and about two percent lower on expenditures, that creates about a twelve million dollar difference on the bottom line. That sounds like big numbers, a lot of money, but we have a budget of about two hundred and eighty million dollars. So when you're looking at a budget that big, small percentages can add up to a big dollar amount, so I don't want to panic anybody when I'm talking about some of these figures, but I just want to put things in perspective. So our trends are showing that expenditures are starting to outpace our revenues. So in line on the forecast, on the specific forecast online six point zero one zero, that shows our expenditures over revenues. Currently, in this current fiscal year, we're showing about a five million dollar deficit. Remember, just a second ago, that's just expenditures over revenues. We have a good cash balance. I'm going to talk about that in a second. Currently, we're projected to spend a little bit more than we're bringing in. Because of the conservative nature of the forecast and where we think we'll actually be, I don't foresee that this will really happen, but we want to kind of put a scenario out there that will, people will see any surprises. So I anticipate things to be a little bit better than I forecast. We currently have a cash balance. We have a target of three to six months of our actual monthly expenditures. Right now, we're anywhere from five to ten months through fiscal twenty-seven, so throughout the forecast, we have a healthy cash balance more than our target three to six months. What I will say about this is our last operating level was in two thousand nine. We call promises made, promises kept. In two thousand nine, we promised our community that we would not be back for operating dollars for four years. So if you do the math on that, two thousand nine was our last operating levy. We said we would not be on until two thousand thirteen. We've promised that. We've gone, according to this forecast, we'll go fourteen years beyond that. So we feel like we're in really good shape financially, and I want to talk through some of the revenue highs as we go through the next slide. The property taxes, it's a pretty large portion of our revenues. About forty percent of our revenues come from property taxes. We have strong property values in this community. We also have a lot of new construction, as you see going around the district. You can see a lot of houses going up, some businesses going up. And those strong property values will increase our overall property value. That will also come into play when reappraisal hits in tax year twenty-three, and those dollars will be collected in twenty twenty-four. Just to give a quick synopsis on property values, as values increase and knowledge rate kind of goes down, so you pay roughly the same. But where people get a little hung up in reappraisal is, let's say, the average in the, in our district is twenty percent property value increase. If your property value increases thirty percent, then your property taxes are going to go up a bit. If your value, if the average is twenty, and it goes, yours goes up ten percent, your taxes actually go down. Now, I don't get any calls from those people when their taxes go down. They won't ever call me, but I can show you factual information where that's how that works. Reappraisal is really just making, what the county auditor does is kind of makes it fair for everybody. If you, if your property went up more than somebody else's, then you, they're, they're saying of our overall tax bill, you should pay a little bit more. What that means to our bottom line as far as how much we collect, our collections stay roughly the same. They don't increase significantly. If we see a thirty percent, well, I'm just going to throw crazy numbers out there. If we see a thirty percent increase in overall property valuation, we will not see a thirty percent increase in property tax collections. That's, that's just not how that works. The only way that we receive additional dollars in any substantive amount is to go back for a new operating levy. As I said before, this forecast does not show that we're going to be on track to do that anytime soon, so that's a good thing. Skipping to unrestricted, stay on the side please, unrestricted grants and aid. This is our state funding formula. Roughly forty-four percent of our revenues come from the Fair School Funding Plan that was passed by House Bill one-ten, passing June of two thousand twenty-one. That funded schools for two fiscal years, fiscal year twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-three, so we're in the second year of our biennium. We were promised for that new fair school funding model that was passed into the law that we would have a basin of one-sixth of the amount for the next, for last year and this year. There is no promise beyond this biennium that we'll get additional dollars from the state of Ohio. That's yet to be seen. That budget usually rolls in really late in the late hours, so I would anticipate not knowing really where we stand until June of two thousand twenty-three about where our next biennium budget will be. So what I've done with our forecast is I've not increased any of our state funding formula revenues. I've kept those stagnant, so if anything additional comes from the state, that will be better for the school district. So that, you know, when you look at those a little bit higher deficit spendings in future years, I'm hopeful that the state of Ohio will step up and fund that fair school funding model. I will say though, as digging into the details, this, we've only been in this model for a couple of years. We're in the second year of this new fair school funding model. There are some unforeseen things that I've noticed in the model. Steeply rising property values, which, which Ohio has seen, you, when you, you've seen the prices of houses that have been selling out there, if you have steep rising property values, new construction, that amount goes against a base funding cost that the state is putting in place. So what the, what the state's base funding model is, as they say, you know, teachers in this school district or in this area, we're going to fund them at a certain dollar amount, and you have X number of teachers, you multiply by that, that's what your base cost is. This is a real simple concept. We have not increased those dollars for the base funding costs, okay? As values go up and the base dollar amount for expenditure stays the same, there's a, there's a difference in those two numbers. So what we've seen is that what they, what that has done is that that would tell us, or the formula would tell us that our state index, which means the amount the state is willing to give us for those funds, has gone down. So the state is not funding us at the level that we would be, should be, should be funded at. And that, those will be things that will be talked about in the new biennial budget as, as we go to our legislators and talk to them about the pros and the cons of the new model, what we think we can do to help that. Other revenues, we're going to stay on revenues for a minute. We also have, there was kind of a give and take here. Last time I was here doing a forecast, we were talking about really low interest rates for our investments, really low interest rates. The highest we had at that time, this time last year, is a one point six five percent treasury that we had purchased for the district. You know, it's about a couple of years back. Anything that I was going out for last year was probably twenty basis points, which means point two percent for investing our funds. Right now, our highest is, we have an investment out there that's three, a little over three percent, and we just purchased one this other day for one and a half percent. So our, our interest earnings have really done a, you know, a complete turnaround, and our revenues will greatly increase over the last time we did this forecast. The one thing that offset that is we, House Bill one-twenty-six went into law, and that eliminates the district's ability to, it doesn't eliminate the district's ability, just, it makes it a little harder for us to go challenge property tax value decreases from some of our businesses in our community. We want our businesses to pay a fair tax on what their property is worth. House Bill one-twenty-six makes it a little bit harder, makes it a lot harder to challenge those values for our, our businesses out there. So one of the ways that we generated a lot of money for the school district is we would, you know, we would go, if they went out and bought a property, it was valued at a million dollars, and they went and bought it at five million dollars, that's the fair market value. They should pay taxes on five million dollars. So we would go after them and say, hey, that, that value should be there. Sometimes we would win those, sometimes we come at a something in the middle. So we've, we've lost a little bit of ability to generate those dollars, so that the increase in revenue we've received from our interest earnings is kind of offset the loss from that, so they kind of wash that out. But it is important to note that those two have been pretty significant changes from the last time I did this forecast, so everybody can have a little information on that. Go to expenditures next. So personnel is what we're, we're in the business of personnel. We're in here, we're here to serve our students in our community, to provide an excellent education at the, at a good price. We have agreements with all of our, our unions and our management agreement with our administrators all the way through two thousand twenty-five, so we know what our, our costs are as far as increases and base pay and set pay and different nuances in those contracts. So we know where we are with our, our finances there. This time last year, we had some contracts that hadn't been settled yet, so there's some uncertainty on what those would be. So it's a little, it's a lot easier, more accurate to predict what your salaries would be if you know that your agreements are in place. So we, we've got those in place, so I'm pretty comfortable where we are with our salaries through two thousand twenty-five. One thing that we have done that we've bumped up since the last time is we've really looked at our substitute pay. Substitutes have been really hard to get, bus drivers in particular, teachers in particular. We also looked at some of our rates that were kind of low in the year, and we bumped those up for our cooks and some other areas. So those were important pieces that we thought we put in place to attract and retain better substitutes. So that was important to us to, to get those in place, but we feel like we're reaping some benefits from that. But if anybody's out there that wants to drive bus for us, we gladly, take your application right now. We really need people in our bus garage helping out. And that's, that's not just a southwestern issue, that is a national issue. I was just reading an article about even semi, semi-drivers, you know, there's a shortage and people transporting goods across the state, across the nation. So we're really in the same boat as everyone else, but we're trying to, you know, try to attract and retain some of those kind of positions. So if you know anybody out there, this is just another PSA plug to try to get those applications in. Recent news, our employee health insurance benefits, we made a switch in carriers from Etna to Anthem. We were able to look at, also look at our healthcare self-fund insurance balances, and we're able to do what we thought was good for our employees at this time, and, and we made that switch. So that was a, that was a positive thing for us. We think that's going to reap benefits for us as far as having a better, a better cost for our health. One thing that I had monitored, been monitoring pretty closely is our purchase services and materials and supplies. Monitoring inflation. You all know that you're out here in our community, you're going to the grocery store, you're going to pump, pump gas. You can see the prices are going up. One thing that we do use a lot of paper in school districts, you know, your, your students come home with paper. We, we have tests, we're doing a lot of stuff with paper. Our paper costs doubled from last year. It was a big increase. What I can say is, you know, our overall paper spend as a percentage of our budget is pretty small, but when you double anything in your budget, even at home, it's going to make a difference. So we're really monitoring those things and making sure that we're on track, being able to provide those supplies as needed and absorbing some of those costs and making sure that we can bring that home to our students. Next slide. A little too hard for you to probably see out there, but I'll point out a few things. You can make that smaller. I'll just give them adjusted. So these three columns, column on the far left is all property taxes. Districts can have basically three types of property taxes. They can have operating dollars. They can have permanent provenance funds, and they can have bond issues to build schools. So tho, those are three types of levies. Not all school districts have those. But to compare apples to apples, you need to look at what all those three could add up to, and you need to, so that, column on the far left is all property taxes. Whether you have a, everybody has operating, some have PI, some have bond issues. So all the taxes are added up on the far left column. The middle column is just operating dollars only. That's just the, to, to do the general operations of the school district. The far right column is our per pupil expenditure as compared to other school districts in Franklin County. We are the gray, the grayed out part at the bottom, and what I can tell you about that is we are looking at, what I'm comparing these two is our class one residential. This is your property taxes as a homeowner that you're paying, your rates that you're paying. We are currently thirteenth out of sixteen school districts in Franklin County. Our property tax rates are thirteenth out of sixteen districts in Franklin County. Can't tell you how many times over the twenty years I've been in this district that people will tell me the southwestern has the highest taxes in the county. This is, this information comes from Franklin County Auditor, and these are the facts, so I just wanted to point that out. That if you're looking at property taxes as far as schools go, that's where we stand with all, all levies added in. The middle column is just our operating dollars. So you take away the PI, you take away the bond issues, take those away, leave the operating dollars standing all by themselves. And we're currently fourteen out of sixteen school districts where, so what I can tell you about that is, it's not a, I'm not saying this is a point of pride. I'm saying is that we are, we try to be good stewards of your funds, try to make sure we're spending our money wisely, and we have not been back to the ballot since two thousand nine, and there's a reason for that. We try to do the right thing as far as what we're doing in our school district, provide the best quality education at the best price possible. We do have some economies of scale here in our school district since we're large. We had some abilities to do some things in a little bit, a more economical manner than some of the smaller school districts in the county. But I just wanted to point it out where we actually do stand in our property taxes as far as how we compare to other school districts in the county. That far right column, this is per pupil expenditure. It's, it's kind of the calculation is exactly how it sounds. Take your total expenditures divided by the number of students you have, and that gives you a number of how much you spend for a child in your school district. We're currently twelfth out of the sixteen school districts in Franklin County. I, I would say that that's pretty good when you think about our population. We have a very high ESL or EL population. We also have a pretty high special education population. We have challenges with economically disadvantaged students. We have a lot of challenges out there that we meet head on, and we're real, we're able to do that as far as spending wise goes. I think we get a lot of bang for a buck. Now, I also, this isn't on that chart to the far right, but I compare it to where we stand with all school districts in the state of Ohio. If you look at our spending per pupil compared to all school districts in the state of Ohio, we spend roughly a thousand dollars yet less per child, and I think that a lot of that has to do with our economies of scale. The average school district in the state of Ohio has about twenty-three hundred students. We have twenty-one thousand students. So we, we can actually, you know, be more efficient in the way we run our school district. And that, that's proven, I think, time and time again, when I put this chart up there that shows how we spend our funds. Let's say that we spent that extra thousand dollars and just got up to the state level. That would be twenty-one million dollars more that we would spend each year. That, that's a lot of money. So I, I think those are important things to point out to the community, to our board, so they have a good feel of where we are financially. Just to wrap this up, I will, I will go back to the beginning and say that we're conservative with our forecast. We want to make sure that we can provide our, provide our community with, with a stable forecast that's conservative, that there won't be any surprises out there. I've pointed out the things where I think there could be surprises, and I'll update the board in May on where those all stand. We should see kind of where the state budget is, but at that time, hopefully, I can get a little bit better information at that point, so. That completes my forecast, and I'm willing to answer any questions.
Questions? Um, first, can you say, when was the operating levy set to, when we originally went to the ballot? How long do we think it would last, and how long have we projected it to last now?
We promised in two thousand nine it would last for four years, so that was two thousand thirteen, and this forecast has a positive cash balance within our target range of carryover all the way to twenty seventeen. So that, I would say that there's fourteen years past where we promised.
And the second question, you mentioned the, the challenges we have with the district, being a very diverse district, with economic disadvantaged students. One of the misnumbers in the community is that the students cost us money in that, you know, we were bifurcated districts. They were two districts if that was a whole different. Can you talk a little bit about how that balances out?
Sure, we have our, maybe you don't know this, but our highest taxpayer is the casino. That's our number one taxpayer in the school district. So that's in our, they pay a tax bill of about three million dollars. So that is not our most, that is an economically challenged area of our school district, I will say that. So we get a large, we get some large dollars from our economically challenged areas of our school district. So we are one school district. We have many different passing authorities within our school district. And I wouldn't say anyone outshines the other. We all help each other. So as a school district in, in total, we need to be together to have that, that balance and that bang for our buck, and I, I would, I think it proves out with our spending per pupil, how we compare to the state. That's a good question.
I don't have a question. I just, I just want to thank you for consistently putting together reports that are simple and easy to understand and being able to kind of help just the average person connect to what's going on, so I just, I appreciate, I feel like I follow along. I get it, and I think most people here would agree with that.
Thank you, Mr. Garci. We'll move on now to our technology presentation. Ms. Valdane.
Hey, good evening, President Johnson, Vice President Caldwell, Dr. Wise, Mr. Garci, and members of the board. I want to thank you for the opportunity once again to come before you and, and share a few things that are going on within the technology department, technology world. With me tonight again is Mr. Jason Kissel, Instructional Technology Liaison. He'll share some things. I'm going to share a little bit about our current one-to-one device program, kind of a little history of it, and where it is now, where it's going in the future. And then Mr. Kissel will share some things that are going on with that technology, some things that are being done in the classrooms to impact the students within our district. So if you remember, if I take you back in time a couple of years, you may remember that when we first had to implement a one-to-one program, we didn't really have a formal one in place yet. But the pandemic came, and it was a necessity. So in a matter of a few, I remember it pretty vividly. I think it was in the middle of the week, we got word that schools were about to close, we had to scramble and figure out a way to get a device. Our plan in the beginning was to at least get one device in every household. So even if it had to be shared, at least there was one available to the students. And luckily, we had been kind of looking forward and, and building toward a one-to-one program over the years, and so we had enough devices out there in the buildings. They weren't actually given to students and taken home yet, but they were available, so we could make that happen quickly. So we've continued that process throughout the last few years, distributed more. We have a pretty, pretty much one-to-one in all grades, except maybe K to two. I think we're kind of targeting a two-to-one ratio there. But this past, at the end of last school year, this summer, we decided it was time to kind of reorganize that and, and put together a more, a more, not thoughtful, we, we were thoughtful in the beginning, but a more intentional one-to-one program and, and roll out. So in May and June, if we could go back, please, in May and June, we collected all the Chromebooks. We reorganized them over the summer, redistributed as this school year began. And now we're to the point where we want to really put together a full-blown five-year replacement cycle is what we're looking at, and we're going to implement that during this school year. Next slide, please. So this turn over to the side, it, it, these numbers just reflect an average day in the district. It's no particular day. I just wanted to give you an idea of kind of how many kids we have at each grade level, because it kind of plays into the, the planning that we've been doing. So if you notice, kind of K through A, it's pretty much, you know, between fourteen, seven hundred kids, fourteen, seventeen hundred kids per grade level, right about a fifteen-hundred-and-fifty average, that'd be about an average. I usually think fifteen to sixteen hundred kids per grade level. But then you'll notice in ninth grade, there's kind of a spike there for ninth grade, and then it kind of tapers back off. And I just wanted to mention those, because as I go through the numbers on the bullets, I thought that would be helpful for you to have an idea and a gauge about how many kids we have per grade level. So the bullets that I've listed here kind of itemize our vision for the future of this five-year replacement cycle for the Chromebooks. The first bullet in grades K to, we actually provide a different device for those students than we do the older students, because they don't know how to use a keyboard yet. They don't know how to use a mouse. And so we, we actually provide a Chromebook that has the additional functionality where they can just touch the screen to use it. So our plan is to purchase annually six hundred of those touch devices for grades K to two. Again, we're targeting a two-to-one ratio in those grades, so six hundred devices over a five-year cycle will give us three thousand devices for those three grade levels, and we should be able to cover those. I'm going to skip over in third and fourth grades for just a second. I'll, I'll come back to them. In fifth grade, we envisioned purchasing nineteen thousand Chromebooks annually, and that, we envisioned that that Chromebook would be used throughout a student's intermediate and middle school years, those four years. And then after those four years, it would actually triple back down to third or fourth grade. Then in ninth grade is the first refresh, so, well, I guess the second refresh. So a student in fifth grade, they'll get a device, they'll use it through eighth grade, turn it back in, and ninth grade they get a new device. So every year in ninth grade, to support ninth grade, we envisioned purchasing another twenty-one hundred devices annually, so we can cover that blip that happens in ninth grade. And then again, that device would be used throughout a student's high school career, turned back in, then tripled back down to, again, third and fourth grade. So if you look at those numbers, the nineteen thousand or nineteen hundred, sorry, plus twenty-one hundred, that's four thousand devices to cover third and, and fourth grade, so that should be plenty. Again, we, we intentionally tried to be conservative with these numbers. We wanted to make sure we had enough. And we may, in the future, we may actually be able to throttle those back a little bit, but in, in the beginning, as we start this out, we wanted to be conservative and make sure that we would have enough for all the students. The last bullet there, we also provide, currently provide Chromebooks to our teachers. So we envisioned purchasing another four hundred annually, again, times a five-year cycle. That would give us two thousand Chromebooks to support teachers. And that gives us a total six hundred plus nineteen hundred, twenty-one hundred and four hundred, that's five thousand devices a year. And that brings us to the, the number we talked about a couple of years ago, one of our February retreats, I think it was, of one point eight million that we tried, that we were trying to target. Next, next slide, please. So a couple of the considerations with this program, I kind of mentioned them already. There are a couple of them. Eighth graders, you know, they would get a device in fifth grade. After they complete eighth grade, they would turn that back in in order to get their replacement. Twelfth graders turn in their device in order to graduate, and then again, those, those devices are still being used, right? They're still in the lifecycle. We, again, we realized that we were trying to be conservative with these numbers to make sure we could cover everyone, but the extras can be put in carts in the buildings, used as loaners, used as spares. There's, there's always a reason for more devices out there in the schools, so that's the plan for those. And another key point here is, many years ago, when the Google, when Chromebooks first came out and the Google operating system was out there, Google would only update the operating system for four years. So, but, but recently, a year or two ago, they extended that to an eight-year lifecycle. So now we have eight years during which, and, and you might say, well, you don't necessarily have to have the latest and greatest operating system to use the device, which you don't, but you do to, in order to use it for certain things like testing. You know, the state requires that you be on the latest and greatest version of the operating system to support it for testing. So this eight-year timeframe, again, really conservatively allows us to fit a five-year replacement cycle well within the life of, of the device itself. So I think at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kissel. So I think at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kissel, and he's going to share with you some of the things that we're doing with these devices out in the classrooms of the district.
Thank you for having me. So I'm, I'm the district technology liaison, really means I work in curriculum, but I work with technology and I work directly with our teachers. So I wear a few different hats, I just kind of want to share some of the products, some of the apps that we've been pushing for. And kind of updating over, over this last school year or so. So something we're really excited about in the, in the curriculum department is we have been pushing our resources into clever. So we have twenty-five, over twenty-five of our vendors now through clever. Clever is basically like, imagine your Rolodex of logins and passwords like, like a third grader would have to remember. All with now just pictures of the app that a kid can click on and no longer have to remember. So it's an amazing tool that simplifies getting correct content to teachers and to students. And we're, we're extremely proud, it's, it's been a lot of work on the curriculum department and on the technology department, get these vendors set up in clever, so we're really proud of that. The next one is Paper, Paper is a tutoring service that, this is what I'm expecting, you're offering it to students in grades seven to twelve. And we've had hundreds and hundreds of sessions logged by kids who are just trying to get some help on a math assignment or an essay, you know, and they just need some help. In the evening, it's an amazing service, it's safe for kids, and we're, we're really happy the kids are using it. So the last one with the new middle schools, we, we have this digital signage, which is basically like, you know, a TV with something plugged into the back, like Chromebook, or like a, like a Chromebook stick. We've, we've decided to kind of up our game a little bit here and try to pilot a new signage option. The, the real impetus for this is we want kids to feel like they belong, and we want kids to feel like there's a sense of culture in the building, and these TVs do a great job of that. Secretaries, principals, other teachers can edit slides and put pictures of people participating in events, or, you know, giving out awards, or just whatever may be happening in the school. So we're really excited, we hope, you know, it's, it's in its infant stages right now, but that's what Air Team is, that's our new digital signage option for our middle school, so we're really excited about that. All right, a couple other numbers real quick, I'm not going to go through, I, I could, I could teach you all how to use all three of these tools, but I'll, I'll square you for that tonight. Go Guardian Teacher is one of our most popular tools that we use in the classroom, it's, it's a great accountability tool for teachers with students. Those top numbers are, since we started, since we adopted Go Guardian Teacher, which was in the middle of the pandemic, we've logged over two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand sessions, which means a teacher says start class, that's a session. So, you know, two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand of them, it's, it's being utilized extremely well by our teachers, and they love it. Pair Deck is a little pair, he's very cute. He is a way to make lecture less boring, so if you have a standard lecture with Google Slides, you just insert some questions in there. Gives kids a great way to interact with, with a lesson that maybe have been a little bit dull in the past. And we, last year, so we're going to kind of scale down, so all time for Go Guardian. Last year for Pair Deck, we answered over a million questions as kids, that's crazy, not one kid answered a million questions, all of them. So it's really good, you know. And then the last one, the little hand is Class Kick, just another one of the tools that I help teachers with, and something we support people, or support our students with. It's an amazing resource to create a, a digital lesson that kids can just, they can add an audio note to answer a question, they can answer a video, they can answer a photo. And it could be something just from Google, they can show their work really well. So this is just this school year, there's already been almost eight hundred assignments created, and it's being utilized in twenty-nine of our buildings, which is almost every building, which is pretty amazing for a tool to span K-12. So those are just a few of our instructional technology tools I'm super proud of. The last thing I'm going to share with you is an esports pilot, if you're not familiar with esports, it's basically a, a, a community of kids who are gaming against another high school. So it might be hard for some of us to hear it be called esports, just because of, you know, I grew up playing football and wrestling, so it's a bit, you know, different than a traditional sport. But there's a ton of research that shows kids who are involved in esports are, are way more involved in their, in their academic courses. And so we're really excited to get this off the ground, there's a teacher at Westland who is just taking it by storm, really putting a lot of time in with the students. It's, it's just a club-level activity at this point, but, you know, they need our support because it's technology, right? So a quick, just in case you're still skeptical, there's, we, we run it through Esports Ohio, it's a, it's a nonprofit in Ohio. Many, many school districts are a part of it, and it's been going on three or four years now, I think. And here's all the research they did when they went to go kind of publish this nonprofit is, you know, it's, it's great for scientific reasoning, it's great for tech fluency and technology, for math achievement, problem-solving skills, there's a million things. It's great to be on a team, you know, it's not a traditional sense of a team. So they've competed a few times, it's been a little bit rough from the start, as it is when you start something new, right? And you're not just playing in your basement, so it's been a little bit of a rough start, but I'm really excited for them, and it seems like the kids are really loving it, and so we're really excited about that.
And if I can just add, there are also millions of dollars available in scholarships at secondary levels, at the collegiate level for students in the area of esports.
Yeah, yeah, just go look up Ohio State's esports arena if you're skeptical, and you'll be like, wow, that's a lot of money in that. So, yeah, that's, that's our little pilot that we're running at Westland, we're really excited about, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving now to board reports. We have no public participation relative to agenda items, so Mr. Caldwell, he legislatively is on report.
Thank you, President Johnson, good evening, everybody. The state legislature remains in recess, as our elected officials are out competing for their own jobs. So unfortunately, we don't have any bills or anything to update everyone on, but the state of Ohio did put out a calendar for School Safety Month, which is the month of October. Each week, the state of Ohio, on various levels of safety within our schools. One is comprehensive safety, talking about things like behavioral threat assessment. For those of you who are members of our PTA, we had a PTA council meeting, a school information dinner recently, and we had our school safety consultant there to talk about the stuff that we're doing to keep our building safe, and also not talk about some of the stuff that we're going to keep our building safe, because people don't need to know that, because then they would know how to get around it. Week two, which is what we're in now, is talking about emotional safety. October twelfth is National Stop Bullying Day, and there are resources available to teachers and students to stop bullying in our, in our schools, in our communities. Next week, on October ninth, is Unity Day, where folks are asked to wear orange and share orange to promote kindness, acceptance, inclusion, and send a visible message that no child should experience poorly. Week three, next to the last week of the month, is physical safety, that's where we talk about school bus safety, conducting safety drills and doing site assessments in our buildings. And then the fourth week of this is going to be Know Your Role, making sure that we're talking about the role of students and educators and schools' resource officers and parents in that whole school community conversation about ways to keep safe. So there is a great resource for, from the school safety center from the state of Ohio that breaks all that information down, and will also be shared with Mr. Garci to put in our notes. That's really it for our legislative votes.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell, moving now to student and staff achievement, Mrs. Martindale.
Good evening, everyone. My favorite part of every meeting is getting to highlights. So first of all, I want to congratulate Grove City High School girls and boys golf team. The girls clinched their fourth consecutive Ohio Conference title. And the boys golf earned second place in the Ohio Capital Conference. Bella Sauer was named O C P Player of the Year, and then I'm just going to kind of run through some names, just to be sure they deserve some additional recognition here. So Bella also got first team. We have Rachel Jones, who got both first team and scholar athlete. Mallory Masterson got second team, Kalen Henson second team, Tristan Wilson got third team. And Stephen Jordan got both first team and also scholar athlete. And Branch Ruffing got second team. An honorable mention are going to go to Chaspin and Zach Beijing, so we want to congratulate all of those again. I also want to congratulate Franklin Heights High School junior Samira Ellie, whose artwork was selected for the Ohio House of Representatives. Her artwork was submitted and then will be displayed at the Vern Rice Center for May of two thousand twenty-four. That is really awesome, she was recognized by the Ohio Art Education Association at the Open House Reception. A special shout-out also to all our Southwestern City School District bands and student organizations that did a great job of representing our schools at the districts, for the district, and the Arts of the Alley Parade. And then for our Southwestern City Schools gift back, some awesome news to report about that. This year's annual Grove City High School NJR Military Care Package Project was another major success. The Cadets partnered with the local chapter of Daughters of the American Revolution to collect thousands of needed items like deodorant and toothpaste from hundreds of volunteers. The Cadets collected, organized, and boxed up items that will be shipped to an Ohio National Guard unit that was recently activated. These items were over twenty-two hundred soldiers serving our country. And one more mention, we think it's back, is last month, our Southwestern Career Academy senior cosmetology students visited the Ashford Senior Living Facility in Grove City for joint programming. Part of their visits spent time with residents and provided hand and arm massages and manicures. I have to add that when I was at the conference that we had for school board members last November, that I got to visit their booth, I did that for me, my fault, so spoiled, I'm embarrassed.
Thank you, Mrs. Martindale, we're moving now to items for action, fiscal and operational management, Mr. Bosso.
Thank you, Madam President, on the fiscal and operational management tonight, we have eleven of, eleven items for action. The first is revised affirmative appropriations for the year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, exhibit X one, it's recommended the Board of Education approve these revised affirmative appropriations. Item number two, the investment in financial statements for September two thousand twenty-two, exhibit X two and X three. It's recommended in accordance with section one-three-five-point-one-four of the Higher Revised Code, the Board of Education approved the September's investments and cash position report for the month of September two thousand twenty-two. Total investments, three hundred and seventy-four million, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. Interest earnings month-to-date is five hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. Interest earnings year-to-date will be one million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. Interest rates are from point one-seven percent to three point oh-four percent. Item number three, the payment of bills, exhibit X four, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the payments in accordance with the bills listed on checks for the month of September two thousand twenty-two. Item number four is donations, it's recommended that the Board of Education accept the donations of seven thousand forty-five dollars as detailed in exhibit X five, and authorize the letters of appreciation be sent to each donor. Item number six is the authorization to pay bills in accordance with section fifty-seven oh-five-point-four-one of the Higher Revised Code, exhibit X six. It's recommended the Board of Education authorize a treasurer to pay the bills for September, which were not processed in accordance with section fifty-seven oh-five-point-four-one of the Ohio, the Higher Revised Code. Item number six, approval of the revised purpose clauses. These are revised purpose clauses for our four high school career tech businesses, programs to sell T-shirts that need to be approved by the Board of Education. Recommend that the Board of Education approve these revised purpose clauses as listed in exhibit X seven. Item number seven, the service agreement and more memorandum of understanding with the Franklin County Sheriff's Office. The district had the longstanding contract with Franklin County Sheriff's Office to provide resource officers at Franklin Heights and at Westland. City of Grove City supplies those resource officers, officers for Grove City and Central Crossing, which is just part of our, your own working relationship with the city of Grove City. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the service agreement and the more memorandum between the Southwestern City School District, Board of Education and the Franklin County Sheriff's Office for services for Franklin Heights High School, along with Westland High School for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year, as presented in exhibit X eight. Item number eight, classroom facilities lease agreement with the Educational Service Center of Central Ohio. It's recommended the Board of Education enter into the classroom lease agreement for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year with the Educational Service Center of Central Ohio, as presented, that'll be exhibit X nine. Item number nine, approval of the five-year forecast, it recommended the Board of Education approve the five-year forecast, as presented by Hugh earlier today. And I just want to say, we are lucky to have a guy like Hugh as a treasurer in this district, and like Kelly was saying, he does make things very clear with the numbers that are presented to us. Item number ten, approval of payment in lieu of transportation. These are, the majority of these were approved back in July's meeting, these applicants came up later on in the year. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the payment in lieu of transportation list for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year, as presented in exhibit X eleven. According to section thirty-two, twenty-seven-point-oh-one of the Higher Revised Code, the average cost of transportation per kid in the state of Ohio is for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year, has been determined by the State Department of Education in the amount of five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. It recommended the Board of Education approve payment in lieu of transportation to those residents who have applied and been approved to receive these reimbursements. Item number eleven, delegate appointment for the Ohio School Board Association Annual Meeting. Each year, the School Board of Education appoints a delegate in alternative to attend the annual business meeting of the OSBA at the conference here in Columbus. This year's meeting is scheduled for November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Years past, our president and vice president go in as alternate representative. This year, I appoint, I guess we changed that to Anthony Caldwell will be the representative, and President Johnson will be the alternative in that. Madam President, after reviewing all these eleven items, I move them for passage.
Thank you, we need a second. Any questions? Moving on, roll call.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Martindale.
Yeah.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes. Moving now to curriculum, Mr. Caldwell.
Thank you, President Johnson, I feel like I got off the hook a little easier than my friend at the other end of the table. I only have one item for action tonight, and it's amendment to something we approved before. On tonight's agenda, there's a recommendation to approve, to approve an amendment to the science standards for high school earth science course. These were adopted in the fall of two thousand twenty, which was during COVID, and also during a change in coordinator staffing we had. As the final documents were compiled, the wrong version, the high school earth science standards were included for board approval. And a member of that committee caught the error last spring, and it was too late for two board readings for Brand Ford at this meeting to correct that. This isn't proposing any change in the K-12 science standards, just an amendment to the high school earth science, Jack really reflected the work of the committee. So we're doing this item, I move for pass.
Thank you, we need a second, ask a minute, thank you, Mrs. Martindale, any questions or comments? Moving on, roll call.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Martindale.
Yes.
Schreiner.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes. Mr. Bosso, back to you for facility development.
Thank you, Madam President, I got my win back here. Items for action under this development, we just have one item for action, the resolution authorizing Southwest City School District to advertise an invitation for bids for the contract to improve the HVA C systems at the Franklin Woods, Galloway Ridge, Crossing, and Park Street Intermediate Schools. These HVA systems are in need of replacement due to age and to provide better air quality for students and staff. The cost of these The cost of these systems will be well over fifty thousand. To pay for these upgrades, the Board of Education intends to use federal funds made available under the American Rescue Plan for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. That was two thousand twenty-one, or the SRA funds is most people refer them to. For all, for most of the cost of these items, the Board wishes to authorize pursuant to the district's policy for the procurement with federal grant of funds, advertisement, and solicitation for other bids for the contract for construction services and materials for these projects. After reviewing this item, Madam President, I move it for passage.
Second, Schreiner.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Schreiner.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale. Ms. Johnson.
Yes. Moving now to Mrs. Martindale for students, school, community.
Uh, we have just a few items. Here's five items for our student. Pleasantly known school students would like to travel to Washington, D.C. in May. Central Crossing High School students want to travel for wrestling to Oregon. Grove City High School baseball. They want to travel to North Carolina. Grove City High School show flyers. They want to travel to Charleston. Grove City High School marching band wants to travel to Orlando, Florida. Every one of these items is paid for by parents, students, fundraising, and boosters. So after reviewing their travel plans, seeing that, you know, they're all going to be supported financially, I recommend the passage.
Great. We need a second.
Second, then.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Ms. Martindale.
Yeah.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Schreiner.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes. Now, Mr. Schreiner with personnel.
Thank you, President Johnson. On the board agenda for this evening, our six personnel items involving two hundred and eleven persons. This includes five certificated resignations, seven certificated changes in employment status, one hundred and fifty-eight certificated employments, four classified resignations, five classified changes in employment status, and thirty-two classified employments. After reviewing these action items, I move them for passage.
Thank you. We need a second. Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yeah.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes. We now come to public participation on non-addendum items. Our first speaker tonight will be either Courtney or Jason Thomas. Sorry, it's Josh.
Hello, I'm Courtney, and I'm here to speak regarding using polling locations in our school. As I've previously stated, we are the only district in all of Franklin County that uses their schools for polling locations that is still open on Election Day. Dublin, Hilliard, Worthington, Columbus City are all closed on Election Day, November eighth. Most of these districts have been closed for several years already because they've seen it poses an increased risk to students in the school building. Thirteen Southwestern City Schools will have a mass public gathering in their building while students are learning on November eighth, Election Day. I've communicated lots of facts in the last several months to you all, and nothing has resulted in a change for this November. I'm now going to advocate for transparency from the district. I believe you have a responsibility as a school district to inform parents that their child's school is being used as a polling location. You have studied, most people know, or they've lived here, they voted there. It's inaccurate. I had no idea my son was in a school that was used to polling location until May, when I picked him up from school. I saw the parking lot was filled with cars. I voted at a church, not at a school. Also, the majority of parents that I speak with had no idea that their school was used as a polling location, especially those with multiple children in multiple schools or starting in a new building. I believe you, as the district, should be notifying all parents whose schools used as a polling locations. They deserve the right to note their child will be exposed to a lot of public members. I've heard that you may send a talking point to principals, and they may communicate that to parents as a logistical issue. I have a petition here that was started two weeks ago to cancel school on November eighth to protect our students. In two weeks, in only one post in a mom's group, the petition has five hundred and seventy signatures. To me, that shows that this community is very concerned about safety of our students. These five hundred and seventy people took the time to put their name to a petition to stand up for the children in our schools. I believe these people represent our parents and families' opinions, and they deserve to know that their school is used as a polling location. The district has also granted some parents, I was included in this, an excused absence if they feel uncomfortable having their child attend school on Election Day. I urge you to communicate to all families that they may keep their child home and it to be excused. I also think that you should state exactly how to offer that excuse absence, because that seems to be another unknown fact. My husband brought this issue up in June. You all listened to him explain why this is a safety concern, and many agreed. I'm disappointed that it's now October, and we're hearing from people in the district that it's too late to close, or it's too late to change. We spoke in June, so the district had time to make a plan and take action. And our belief, the calendar could have changed over the summer before the school year even began. I'll end my speech with two thoughts and two calls for action. Thought number one, in Toledo, Ohio, in August, in the August election, just two months prior to today, a man entered an elementary school and threatened to shoot up polling machines. Toledo Public Schools thankfully were not in session on that day, so the children were safe. The man was also detained. But what if that happened in our schools next month? What if he isn't detained and causes harm? No safety plan will either protect the kids in the community of a trauma that this type of scene can cause. Thought two, on May twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-two, a mass public shooting occurred in Uvalde, Texas, killing twenty-one people, nineteen children. It's a tragedy that will forever affect all of us. This tragedy happened because one door in the school was left unlocked. On November eighth, almost half of our school buildings in the district will have one door unlocked. The call for action I have is to have the district contact all parents and let them make the choice whether to send their school one, send their child to school on November eighth if their child is used, if their school is used as a polling location. My second call for action is to close schools on Election Day for every November and May going forward. The job of our schools is to provide a safe learning environment for every child. Thank you.
Madam, Madam President, I would like to preface my remarks by noting that nothing I will say tonight refers to a specific member of this board by name. However, some people's fragile egos or delicate sensibilities might be offended by my remarks. To those folks, I say, get used to it. In America, there's something called free speech. The First Amendment guarantees us all the right to praise and criticize our public officials. Now on to my remarks. At last month's meeting, conditions in Southwestern schools were brought up. The discussion included harrowing claims that boys are invading school, girls' restrooms. The allegations implied this is a widespread problem, not merely the isolated antique of a single mischievous youth. If this is a widespread problem, the public deserves details. How many times did boys invade girls' restrooms? When did the incidents occur? In what schools did they occur? Did any students complain to the principal? If so, was there an investigation? In other words, we, the public, deserve specifics, either put up or shut up. Judging from past performances, though, I expect these tales actually are nothing more than rumors, hearsay, exaggerations, distortions, and even more likely outright disinformation. It reminds me of the old fable about Chicken Little. Remember that one? When an acorn falls on Chicken Little's head, he runs around town panic-stricken yelling, "The sky is falling, the sky is falling." The modern-day version of Chicken Little are, are those who promote culture wars. "You must be afraid, very afraid," they warn, "I'm gonna sleep, because as Chicken Little screamed, the sky is falling, the sky is falling." In reality, these culture wars are nothing more than scare tactics used by unscrupulous politicians to arouse their base and get them out to vote in congressional, state, and presidential elections. It's all one big con aimed at the politically naive, the conspiracy devotees, the clinical fringe. Southwestern school, Southwestern students should not be part of such circuses. So please, no more rumors, no more hearsay, no more exaggerations, no more distortions and disinformation. Our children's education is too important for such driven. Thank you.
Third is Raven Tedlock.
Hello, my name is Raven Tedlock, and I'm a transgender and queer student, and I'm a sophomore at Grove City High School. A couple of weeks ago, I saw a video of a board member talking about different things happening in schools. He said some things that first made me angry, but I quickly became saddened. I'm sad because it's twenty twenty-two, and I'm still having to worry about my rights as a transgender student. He said a lot of things about political posters around the school. When they said this, it was obvious that they meant rainbow posters. Rainbows are in no way political, nor are safe space posters. They said the posters should be student-related, and I would like to argue that posters made by a club at school are student-related. I know from experience that safe space posters are extremely helpful. Seeing these signs made me feel like I was supported at school. It also helped me know which teachers I can go to when I get bullied. Every time I walk in the halls and see an LGBTQ poster, I feel a bit safer. But many politicians are trying to take that away. The board member said that dogs for Christ posters are ripped down and no one is punished. It is the exact same for LGBTQ posters. The B Proud Heart outside of the office was torn in half three times, no one was punished. People have stolen pins multiple times from my bag because they were queer-related, queer-related, and no one was punished. Mr. Bosso constantly argues that parents should be notified if a student is changing into a dress at school and changing accordingly. But this can put students in a dangerous situation. If their parents are unaccepting, they could be abused or even kicked out. Also, teachers have to follow the federal education privacy law. This includes not revealing a student's transgender status to anyone, including parents. LGBTQ people should be able to freely express themselves without fear, just as their peers can. If we introduce rules where teachers can outstudents, this will make school a miserable and uneasy place for many students. The board member and many other people also mentioned that girls who go in the bathroom because they don't want to be there with a trans woman, which does not happen. Most of the time, kids don't use the bathrooms because they're often trashed, or people are in there doing things other than using the bathroom. Trans students often use the bathroom of their gender they were assigned at birth, or the nurse's office bathroom, which is gender neutral. Even though I'm, I'm trans masculine, I still use women's restroom. Even if I was allowed to use my preferred restroom, but I don't feel safe enough to do so. Making rules about things that are LGBTQ also turns it into a taboo topic. I want to grow up into a world of acceptance, but I, but that can't happen when LGBTQ students continue to be targeted. All students deserve to feel safe at school, which is part of the mission statement for the Southwestern City School District. The school board is supposed to support students of all backgrounds, races, sexual orientations, as well. But as of now, that is not happening. I don't want this speech to change anyone's political opinions. All I ask is that we please stop taking away queer students' rights. I go to school to get an education, but I can't do that when I'm worried about my safety. I face daily discrimination everywhere I go, especially at school. And with even the school board against me, that is normalizing the discrimination I face. We need to try harder to support every student. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kelly Dillon.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Kelly Dillon, and our family has lived within the Southwestern City School District boundaries since two thousand and five. We have two children, one who attends Grove City High School, another who attends Jackson Middle School. I bring up these facts to help board members and other members of the public understand I consider myself a part of this community, have roots here, and have a stake in our schools as a parent and taxpayer. I consider myself not just a community member, but an expert on the subject of which I've decided to speak. I hold two advanced degrees in psychology, a master's, and PhD in communication, am a tenured associate professor, and teach undergraduate courses in media law, literacy, history, theory, and research methods. I don't list these accolades just to make my mother proud, but rather to situate my expertise on freedom of speech in both off and online contexts. As I am certain our Board of Education and superintendent are aware, the Supreme Court has a long history of protecting student and teacher speech in a school. Upon reviewing the minutes from recent and past board meetings, comments from public forums and social media in our community, I feel secure in making the assumption that everyone here desires and works hard to live by laws set by our highest court. In case you don't have your pocket Constitution handy, I can get you one. The First Amendment reads, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press." But what is speech? The Supreme Court has defined speech broadly and includes clothing, oral speech, printed speech, posters, and flyers. Though it may seem like any speech might be allowed almost anywhere, the Supreme Court has drawn some boundaries. I have a feeling there are not as many con law nerds here as me, so I will quickly cite these cases. Tinker v. Des Moines specifically addressed protest speech. Students against the Vietnam War wore armbands as a protest, to which the school decided they should ban armbands. The court found armbands are pure speech, and students do not lose their First Amendment rights when they step onto school property. In order for any speech to be curbed or limited, the school must prove that the quote, "conduct in question should materially and substantially interfere with the operation of the school," end quote. Possible disruption is not allowed as an excuse to curb speech. There must be actual disruption. Thus, from this historical case that has been cited in hundreds of state and federal lawsuits, we can assume speech like signs for dogs for Christ or inclusion must be allowed unless there is a record of actual disruption in the schools. As of tonight, I could not find any incidents that refer to disruption of education in our district by any signs of any group or club. I have seen, like we all did last week at Beulah Middle School, speech indicating immediate harm is not permitted or is legal. In Bethel v. Frazier, the court found a school can actually limit speech by students, but only if it includes graphic vulgar or lewd speech. Societal standards determine typically what is graphic vulgar or lewd, and we typically know it when we see it. Any type of nudity, slurs, depictions of violence most likely can be limited in our schools, and it should be. But instances of speech we might see in, say, Disney World, like rainbows or costumes, would likely not be seen as graphic vulgar or lewd by the average person or the Supreme Court. You might be most interested in the recent case of Kennedy v. Bremerton. This was decided in June and found that a high school coach's midfield prayer practice was indeed free speech. The court found the First Amendment protects anyone engaging in a personal religious observance from government reprisal, including at a public school. We can expand this finding to be that speech advertised to happen after or outside school hours is protected and cannot be limited by the school. Although Kennedy was the coach, he was not offering the prayer as the coach. Thus, we can expand this finding to be speech offered by other employees of a school, like a safe space sticker or support for inclusion and diversity is also protected. Now that I may have completely bored you with Supreme Court history, I want to make the final point that if our school board at either the state or local level were to choose to limit the speech of our students, teachers, or employees, it would likely lead to costly lawsuits. This time and money could be better spent helping our students understand their own constitutional rights, how powerful their voices can be, and the deep history of our country, including those decisions we may or may not agree with. If we are truly a community of laws made up of law-abiding citizens, we must make sure the decisions made by elected officials or those teaching our children are also following established law. Teachers' freedom of speech does not end at the school classroom or school doors. Students' freedom of speech does not end at the school door, nor does it start after the school bell.
Thank you, Dr. Dillon. Is Jason Gochet. And I hope I got that close to right. You did. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jason Gochet and I am a proud graduate of Franklin Heights High School in 1996. I lived in this district for 40 years and currently have three children attending schools within the district. In January, I had the pleasure of interviewing for the open seat at that time on the board. During that interview, I shared with you how one of my children was a victim of cyberbullying during a previous school year. The bullying happened during school hours while the students were in a school building and using a school-issued Chromebook. This incident involved a student messaging one of my children, telling him to kill one of my other children. And he did that over 100 times in about a 10-minute period. Four of you up there were a part of that interview and expressed your remorse for this event happening. For obvious reasons, cyberbullying is something that I take very seriously. Now, for the record, I'd like to take a second and give you some of the definitions of cyberbullying. Oxford defines cyberbullying as the activity of using messages on social media, emails, text messages, et cetera, to frighten or upset somebody. Merriam-Webster defines cyberbullying as the electronic posting of mean-spirited messages about a person. Now let's jump to the school board meeting that took place on September 12th. During that meeting, during the time set aside for items of discussion by the board members, Mr. Bosso brought up the opinion that one sign in particular was of a political nature. Despite his personal opinion, he suggested that the signs come down at the end of the school year so that at the beginning of the next school year, each organization with its new student makeup could decide what issues are important to them and put up new posters if they desired. He wasn't arguing that the poster in question be taken down and not allowed back up. Mr. Bosso was arguing that the issues around the posters be fair for all students, not just the students in support of that poster that was in question. Mr. Caldwell, that night you made a Facebook post with a picture of yourself in front of this poster, asking what the public sees. You went on to say that children should have the freedom to learn and pursue their dreams in an environment that is inclusive and accepting. You also said that we need to allow students to be themselves, to teach the good and bad of our history. You said these things in a way that implied that Mr. Bosso spoke in favor of the exact opposite. I urge everyone in this room to go back and listen to the audio of that meeting. What you implied is incorrect. In doing so, you created a space on a social media platform that welcomed mean-spirited and upsetting messages by the general public towards Mr. Bosso on your post and on another post made by the district. This, Mr. Caldwell, is cyberbullying. How do you expect the children in the district to follow a policy that forbids this type of behavior if you as a board member are guilty of it? Mr. Caldwell, I urge you to publicly apologize to Mr. Bosso for this behavior and refrain from doing it again. In closing, I know that we live in a very divisive and political world. I want to remind members of the school board and all those in the meeting tonight that you are entitled to your views and opinions, but don't forget that Mr. Bosso and Mrs. Martindale were elected by this community and done so overwhelmingly. They may not represent your views or opinions, but they do represent the views and opinions of the tens of thousands of people that voted for them. We need to learn to accept these different opinions. They are what truly makes us a unique and diverse community. Thank you for your time.
Adam White.
Madam President, members of the board, thanks for the opportunity to speak this evening. I stand as a third member of the son-in-law, husband, father, and father-in-law of Southwestern City School employees. I'm also the father of two Westland High School students and the grandfather of one future Southwestern City School student. At the board meeting on September 12th, a member of this board stated, "Girls can't even go into the bathroom." This was made in the context of a perceived concern about transgender students using restrooms. Since those facilities appear to be a matter of public concern, I thought it would be beneficial for members of the board to be acquainted with a few facts about them. At Westland, the school from which my oldest son graduated in 2016 and my two youngest children attend today, the facts about our restrooms are these. There are approximately 1,900 students at Westland High School. For the bathrooms reserved for females, there's one bathroom with 10 stalls, which breaks out to one stall for every 97 students. For the bathroom reserved for male students, this is per my youngest son, there's one available bathroom with 16 urinals, three stalls with a door, and one for reasons unknown without. There are other restrooms at Westland High School originally built for the use of students that are no longer available to them. This is the restroom environment that this board has chosen to provide to one of the four high schools in our district. A restroom environment that resembles Ohio Stadium at a sold-out home game in which are frequently scenes of riotous disorder where any student, any student, would reasonably fear for his or her safety. Why was this decision made? The official reason is that students smoking, vaping, drug use, drug dealing, and the potential for violence precludes opening both restrooms. From conversations with my children, who are current Westland students, I believe that these concerns to be very well founded. I don't relay these facts or you with the details, but rather for you to consider these facts in light of the comments made at the meeting on the board of September 12th. Are members of this board spending their time and attention on the actual risks our kids face? Or are you casting about for imagined, fictitious, and irrelevant issues in the service of some other agenda? One of the better managers I've ever had in my life once told me, "Leadership is first and foremost about setting priorities. You will never solve every problem or address every concern, and you can't reasonably be expected to." What I do expect, and the public trust with which your charge demands, is that you dedicate your time and attention not to personal hobby courses or fantastical hypotheticals, but rather the actual issues of public safety that impact our children today and will impact them tomorrow. Where are the priorities of the members of this board? Evidently not where your attention is most needed and where the attention of board members with a background in public safety would be welcome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jenny Shore.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. I come to you as a taxpayer, a parent of Southwestern City School kids, one that's graduated and one that is Westland currently, and a teacher in this district, but mostly as someone who's a lifelong learner. My job is to meet students' needs and help them grow and to thrive in members of this community. I believe and have witnessed that students have more success in their learning and grow more if they feel safe and supported. I think we can all agree that a student that gets a good night's rest, eats a good breakfast, and feels supported at home has a better chance to grow. However, you are all involved with the public in any way and in the schools, and you and I know that is not the situation for every one of our students. Filling those needs and those gaps are done in varied ways, including and certainly not limited, we provide meals, we put counselors in schools, we have community in schools, we have other mental health services, and we get activities for the kids to build the whole child. One way that I believe we can make students feel supported is by learning more about special, specific populations our students identify with. I've worked over these past two years to seek out these additional professional development to do this. This past summer, I participated in 75 hours, six courses, not that I got from some fly-by organization from the National Education Association. These classes included supporting transgender, non-binary, and non-conforming students, exploring connections, the intersections of race, gender, gender identity, and sexual orientation, walking the talk, platform strategies for addressing LGBTQ plus bias, and taking a stand, creating a safe school for LGBTQ students. Though through these courses and through a district LGBTQ plus book study that I got into during the summer of 2020 when we were all at home, I've learned so much. They taught me about issues these students faced. I am horrified at some of the information I learned. Dropout rates, failure to pursue post-secondary outcomes, something that we strive for, suicides, mental health issues. From the 2019 Glisten survey, Ohio highlights point out that many students, 15%, hear homophobic remarks from staff members, and negative comments about their gender expression was at 33%. Additional fact, most LGBTQ students in Ohio experienced anti-LGBTQ victimization at school. In addition to that, they also experienced discrimination on disability, 39%, religion, 25%, race, ethnicity, 16%. Most never report that, 57% never reported here in the state of Ohio. And the 27% that, of them that report, 27% see that something happens in retribution to that, which means we have over 70% of incidents that nothing happens. Last school year, over 25% of the Southwest Career Academy population signed a petition to start a GSA. The job was posted, and looking for a leadership opportunity, I took it. My role was to be their advisor, share with them opportunities, and mostly just give them a safe space to have their group. Only about a dozen kids actively participated, but 25% of their peers thought it was important enough to give them that safe space to make them feel welcome, welcome, engaged, and maybe make them feel safe enough to learn. In the next week, I will resume my role as a GSA advisor at a new school. I am now at Westland. When I asked the students what they hoped to gain out of GSA, the responses I got were get out of my comfort zone, build community, help school feel safer and more accepting, better understanding myself and my LGBTQ plus friends, be more comfortable, talk to others like me. If my job is to reach all students, our district needs to provide appropriate professional development to help make our environment a safe space for all students. The continuing education I received will allow me to create that safe space so these students can achieve these goals and beat these statistics. I would like to call out that every teacher and every board member in this district take these training sessions and that we can make free and public education available for every gender, every sociognomic class, every race, and everything in between, because that is what this is about per the Department of Education website. Thank you so much.
Hello. I would like to start by introducing myself. My name is Anita Clay. I am a daughter of a former Southwestern City School employee, passed away in August. May he rest in peace. I'm also a 1998 graduate of Westland High School. I'm a resident of Southwestern City Schools. I live in Dalloway. I'm also a parent of two students who attend Westland High School. I'm also a parent of a Southwestern City School teacher who works at Pleasant View and the mother-in-law of a teacher who works at Westland. And I too am a teacher with Southwestern City Schools. I give this introduction because I want the board to understand my dedication to this community and this district. And although I may not be from Grove City, what I have to say still matters. And I may not be considered your constituent, but you all still have a duty to hear and consider my words. Tonight, I'd like to discuss our district's latest grade card, a celebration of sorts. On that grade card, there are some wonderful points of pride. We scored five-star ratings in both the areas of progress and gap closing. That is a huge accomplishment that we should all be proud of. We also scored a three on achievement component, which means that our students met state standards on testing, another point to be proud of. But when I saw that we received a two-star rating on graduation rates, I was slightly surprised with five-star ratings in both categories of gap closing and progress. Then a three in achievement, one would think we have the utilities to get students to the very important goal of graduation. So being the lifelong learner that I am, I asked myself, why are kids dropping out? Through my research, I was not privy to our district stats, but I was looking at national averages and research conducted on the national level. While doing this research, I discovered that students drop out for a multitude of reasons. Some of the reasons include needing to work to help support their families. Another factor was team pregnancy. And another was even taking care of an ill family member. These circumstances are difficult for a district to navigate, and I understand that. However, there were other factors that young people reported as their reasoning for dropping out that are factors that districts and schools can navigate. Not feeling safe, not feeling welcomed, or not having a sense of belonging, being bullied. These factors we can navigate. According to the American Psychological Association, it is estimated that one-third of students who identify as LPT, LGBTQ plus drop out of high school. That's well above the national average for any subgroup. They report having hostile school environments and being constantly bullied. This is something, as a district, that we can intervene, and we are trying to intervene. We as a district should continue to support our marginalized students for the success of their futures and for the betterment of our district. Unfortunately, the comments made last month by some board members are not fostering student success. Those comments derailed our focus as a district. Those comments only fostered division and did nothing to help promote student success. The goal of this district should always be to do what is in the best interest for our students, all of our students. And if that's not the goal of all the board members, their intent is questionable. There are other factors that influence young people to drop out as well. Expulsion, gang involvement, incarceration. These two are issues that districts and schools can and should find ways to intervene. These issues are non-divisive. We can rally and work together as a district, not only to help our schools become safer places for student learning, but also try to help those students who have fallen into unhealthy and unproductive activities that could prevent them from graduation and ultimately a successful adulthood. As a parent, gun, gang, and drug violence are very real fears for not only myself, but many other parents, families, and caregivers as well. I would like to encourage the board to refocus, to work together, and to do what is in the best interest for all of our students and get them to graduation. Thank you for your time.
Our final speaker this evening is Megan Taylor.
So we're kind of circling back to where we started with the comments this evening. So my purpose for being here tonight is to urge the district one more time to commit to communicating polling location information to all school-affected families. I'm speaking as a parent. I was surprised this year to learn that my child's school is a polling place during school hours. I've lived in Grove City for 16 years. I voted in a township building. I voted in a church. I drive past a school to get to my polling location, so I just, I simply did not know that this was a practice in the district and that it would impact my child. The only reason I became aware of the impact is because I randomly reached out to an old soccer teammate's mom. It was horny, to check in and say hi. And when I reached out, I hadn't talked during months and months and months, but she remembered where my child was going to be going to school this year and said, hey, did you know this? And I said, no. So I said to my husband, who has lived in Grove City his whole life, did you know child's school is being used for this? He said, no. Started texting friends. I had a lot of friends that were surprised. So, you know, I don't know how you all quantify and determine the idea that most parents actually do know this. With how rapidly kids move between intermediate, middle school, high school, new school every few years, if it's not something they've experienced before, they don't know. There's been a lack of families reaching out to y'all about this from the different schools. I wouldn't use that as evidence that all of the parents know and are just cool with it, but maybe they haven't reached out because they still don't know. but maybe they haven't reached out because they still don't know the reach of Courtney's bubble and my bubble that we've been able to talk to isn't district-wide. I'll say that. I believe that every single responsible party of every student in an impacted school should have this information, whether they've lived in the district their whole lives and remember voting in the school, whether they voted at a school themselves, whether they just started in a new school in the district, whether it's been something they've been worried about in the past for whatever reason, but just didn't reach out. Or maybe they did. I've heard from people who have said they've brought it up in their schools and just haven't seen a change. And I don't know what didn't push them to go further, but I'm glad that we're talking about it now. You know, whether people that maybe five to 10 years ago weren't as concerned with the safety on election day, but now some of us are just feeling a lot more nervous about these situations. And then there's going to be some that are concerned about it, sure. But every guardian deserves to have the information needed to make that choice for their child on the upcoming election day, when there are going to be hundreds of community members entering their school. I know it's a big district. I know you all have a lot on your plates, but that is my ask of you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's start. Items for discussion. With members of the board.
We'll close then, President. October 24th, our board meeting is at the Career Academy. We are highlighting our adult learning hub with our STNA and our welding. There will be an option for a virtual welding experience after the meeting for folks who want to participate. Most of our meetings are here for October 24th. We'll be at the Southwestern Career Academy. So I want to picture folks who wear a bat.
Nothing else. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Caldwell, when you said, "Alfred," thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Your call.
Caldwell. Yes, Mrs. Martindale. Martindale, yes. Driner? Yes, it does.
Yes. Thank you all for coming, and hopefully we see some of you at the Career Academy in two weeks.